Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 16th meeting of the Lower Providence Township Board of Supervisors. If you could please all rise and join me in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Mrs. Ekman?
Here.
Mr. Sergini?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Zimmerman is absent.
Okay, prior to our meeting this evening, we held our executive session and we discussed legal and personnel matters. All right, with that, moving on. First item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. And we have some minutes in that consent agenda and monthly reports, payment of bills. And if someone would like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Patrick, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Questions from the audience on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Item two, new business. This will be a discussion and consideration of new township safety manual and appointment of assistant township manager as the Accident and Illness Prevention Program Coordinator. Okay? Quite a title, Jerry. Could you help us with that?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Last year, the board authorized the township to join the Susquehanna Municipal Insurance Trust to secure our workers' compensation insurance. They gave us the best rates for comparable coverage to what we had. One of the provisions of that trust agreement was for us to adopt the Susquehanna Municipal Trust Safety Manual. So this was a requirement. This is not a safety manual that we created on our own. If you read over each page, and hopefully you did, you'll see we tweaked it a little to drop in specific areas that would coordinate with our operations here. But basically, probably 98% of it is already in use by all the other members of the municipal trust program. So that's what we're looking at. I'm asking for authorization on that one. But one of the provisions within that manual is to appoint the Accident and Illness Prevention Program Coordinator, their title, certainly not one we made up. We do have a Safety Committee chairperson, that's Jim Alexander. He's been the chairperson for a few years now. This isn't replacing that position. This is, and you'll see that list in there in your memo, it's functions that I've been doing probably the entire time I've been here. There are administrative functions for the Safety Committee, it's audit, control, it's training, it's oversight of the whole program. So that's what they're requiring us to appoint here, someone to fill that position. So I'll work in conjunction with the chairman of the Safety Committee. So that's really all I'm asking tonight, the adoption of the Safety Manual and the appointment for that position, if the board pleases.
Jerry, does the adoption of the manual require the township to take any additional steps that we haven't had before that would amount to increase the cost? Like I saw there was a provision that you had CPR safety. Does that mean like, under the terms of the manual, we have to have a defibrillator in certain rooms or something like that? Anything that would cost us, that we have to go out to make sure that we're in compliance in with the terms of the manual?
Good question. As far as the AEDs, no. It does not require specific pieces of equipment such as that, although of course, we do have the AEDs in police vehicles and, you know, certain parts of the building here and in our public works and parks vehicles. No, it does have training requirements, but we're subject to those training requirements anyway. You know, the annual bloodborne pathogen, lockout, tagout, confined space, anything that's specific to our operations here. Voluntary ones such as slips, trips, and falls, office safety, and even defensive driving, they're, again, they can be optional, but we conduct those just the same.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. And I see there's a memo here from Jim Alexander and says the Safety Committee reviewed and has approved this manual.
They did. They had taken this and had a number of different meetings, you know, over the months to review it policy by policy. In addition to that, then Mr. Primus and his crew leader and foreman had reviewed it for policies and programs that are specific to the Public Works and Parks Department, such as the lockout, tagout, the confined space, and areas such as that.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, so you're looking for the board to accept your Safety Manual and your appointment as this coordinator. Is that correct? Okay. Anybody like to put a motion on the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions from our board members? Questions from the audience on this? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Okay. Moving along. Item 2B, discussion and consideration of award for audit contract for the 2014, 15, and 16 township financial statements. And Sue, you have a, you're gonna handle this one?
Yes, thank you. Our contract with our current auditing firm expires with the audit of 2013. At the August 7th board meeting, the board authorized us to advertise an RFP for this, for auditing services for the years 2014 through 2016. The notice of the RFP was published in the Times Herald and posted on the township website on August 9th. The deadline for the proposals was Aug., I'm sorry, September 12th at 2:00, at which time we received three proposals. We also received a letter from our current auditing firm, RKL, who declined to send, to submit a proposal. The three firms that responded were, the first one was BBD, and their rate was $20,000 per year for each of the years. The second one was Nally at $19,000 per year, and Zelenkovsky, Axelrod, also proposed $19,000 per year. Just as a reference point, our audit for 2013 was $19,000. So they're keeping it even for the three years, those two firms. On October 3rd, Rich, Jerry, and I met with representatives from all three of the firms. They all have a lot of experience with government and municipal audits, so any one of them would be more than adequate for what we're looking for. Of the two with the lower quotes, Nally stood out. They had one thing that went above and beyond what everybody else had. They had fraud detection software. I don't know that they're really gonna find anything, but it's just another layer of security. They're also a very local firm and audit a lot of municipalities that surround us, so they're familiar with the area and have worked with us before as well. Based on the recommendation of the township manager, assistant manager, and myself, I am respectfully requesting that the board award a contract for the auditing services for the years 2014 through 16 to Nally.
Okay, thank you, Sue. All right, well, with that recommendation, would someone like to make a motion to accept that?
I would make the motion to accept the Nally as the, or Nally as the auditor for the next three years.
Okay. At a cost of $19,000 for each year.
Correct.
Okay. Do we, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Who was the auditor before RKL?
Nally Falcon Arrow.
It was Nally. And do you have any idea, did they give you any indication why RKL didn't submit a proposal?
It was, I have their letter there and here, and where is it? It's not very detailed. It just says, "Based on the requirements that are included in the request for proposal, we will not be bidding on the proposal." It's the same one we did the last time, so I'm not sure what the problem or why they chose not to.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they had a series of internal changes at RKL. The original, when I, my first year here, the auditor that actually did the boots on the ground audit, she was replaced at RKL. And then we had a second auditor who went, did the second year that I've been here, did the entire audit, and she knows sooner completed it, and she was replaced. So there's been a lot of internal turnover at RKL. So I suspect that they're probably, you know, limiting what, you know, contradicts their bidding on as far as all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Okay. Do we have any questions from the audience on the motion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, item 2C, discussion and consideration of authorization to execute electric generation contract. Jerry, you're gonna handle this one?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. In June 2010, the Board of Supervisors had authorized staff to go out to bid for rates for the electric generation portion of our electric consumption needs. That was right around the time of deregulation, at least in this area. At that time, it was recommended that we bid the process. Our solicitor has confirmed that second-class township code does not require the township to bid for electricity services. As such, we're going to request to proceed in this manner. Right now, our contracts are held by Constellation Energy. When we went out to bid, the award was awarded to Exelon. They've since merged with Constellation. That's why we're with Constellation now. We have two separate rates. One rate is for our streetlights and traffic lights. The other rate is for all other general electricity consumption needs. The general electricity, no pun intended, the general electricity requirement contract expires in December of 2014, and the contract for the rates for the streetlights and traffic lights expire in January of 2015. We have to provide the Constellation with a 30-day notice if we're not going to be renewing with them, thus the timing now in October. In preparation for securing the best rates, township staff, the finance department, has reached out to four carriers, and they are prepared to begin supplying us with the daily rates by noon of each day, beginning Monday, the 20th of October, for five days straight. So we can just monitor that for a week to see if there are any fluctuations, hopefully determine a pattern if there is going to be one in that timeframe, and then by Friday of next week, after five days, be in a position to make a decision to contract with one of those suppliers. Second-class township code, we're going to go out with, for three bids, fund us of caution, we're going with four. And the reason we need to be asking the board now to authorize staff to execute the contract is when the daily rates come through, they're only good for that day, for a 24-hour period. So if we waited and came back to the board two weeks later, those rates would no longer be valid. So that's where we are, so I'm respectfully requesting that the board authorize staff to lock in the fixed rates for the generation portion of the township's electricity and to execute a contract with the lowest-priced supplier for either a one, two, three, or four-year contract, whichever provides us with the best rate.
Okay. I do have some questions, but just minor. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Jerry's request for the authorization to execute the electric generation contract when the, when the rate, when the best rate comes available?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jason, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay. Jerry, now my, my question, have you done any preliminary looking to see what, what our rate could be and what was it previously?
Right. I really don't know what it was prior to 2010, but it wasn't broken out that way. But I have done some preliminary research through the Pennsylvania League of Cities and Municipalities, PLCM. They offer, they're MUA, Municipal Utilities Alliance. And so I had contacted them to see what our rates would be and spoke in length with Jeanette Pugh, very knowledgeable administrator of the program. As it happens, they use, the PLCM uses Constellation Energy to supply the generation portion of electric to their member municipalities. So I asked, I said, "Well, we have Constellation, would we get a better rate?" She stated, "Yes, because they receive the wholesale rate. We, as a buyer, whether it's here at the township or individually at our homes, if we called Constellation Energy, we would get the retail rate." So I immediately sent an email, well, I went into the township manager and said, "Yeah, sounds like a great program. Let's go proceed with that and investigate it." But meanwhile, I sent an email to our representative at Constellation Energy stating, "What would our rate be if we went through PLCM versus what you're giving us now?" And she looked at her records and said, "Wow, we thought you were with PLCM. We've been giving you that rate all along." So we pretty much lucked out the last four years because we were not a member of this mutual municipal utility alliance with PLCM. And to give you an idea, they have 100, the PLCM Municipal Utility Alliance has 187 members. Of those members, upper Marion and lower Marion participate. So we, you know, we have some big-name neighbors, municipalities, that have also done their research and have found them to be providing the best rates. So I wouldn't be at all surprised at the end of next week, we, you know, we realize no one's offering us a better rate than Constellation, but we're still going to do our due diligence and research it, whether through the PLCM, so, because if you want to, you could call that a fifth provider, vendor, and the other four vendors.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. You sort of took care of my next question, which I didn't ask you because I wasn't sure if we were part of like a consortium, because I remember way back, what, 2010? I remember us talking about it, but I think in, I guess in the end, it was the same or no different, so we didn't enter into that.
Right, and I pulled, I pulled the minutes. Back in, prior, June of 2010 is when the board had adopted the resolution to go out for a bid. However, in some meetings prior to that date, there was a representative that was, made a presentation to the board discussing this mutual municipal, well, I just wanna say MUA, and we'll just know that I'm not referring to the municipal authority, the MUA. And they had presented, so that may be what you're remembering also, those of you that sat on the board at that time. But ultimately, I don't know where the mix-up came in, but it ended up benefiting the township that we got the PLCM rates from Constellation.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. You'll keep us up to date on what, what rate you get?
We'll do, we'll update the board. If you'd like, we can send you the daily rates also.
No. I'll let you handle that.
Will do.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Just so I understand this a little better, you're gonna lock in a rate now that goes for four years, perspective?
It's possible. It depends on what they offer. Last time through, the best rate, I don't, I guess the best rate was for a four-year rate, but that's not guaranteed that it will be. I mean, if the board has a preference, if you don't want us to lock in for as long as four years, that's something that...
I'm just looking at the energy industry as it blossoms in this country, and I'm just wondering if that might be a little short-sighted in this environment to go out four years. Might be a good thing. Everything's a gamble. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I would suggest that if we're at or below where we are now, then a longer-term agreement would be beneficial.
At or below? Go with as long as, up to four years if possible.
Okay. Any, any questions from the audience on this issue? Okay, hearing none, let's call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None? Motion carried. Okay. Item 2D, discussion and consideration of a revised final subdivision plan for 324 Level Road. And I believe the developer is here with their representative, and Mike, do you have something to start this off?
Only, thank you, only to say that this is a plan that the supervisors have seen previously. It's been actually approved previously, but the HTC Associates and Gambon Development are bringing it forth with some minor changes, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Welcome, Sue.
I'm the tour director for tonight with the minor changes to the plans. Couple of things are housekeeping stuff that we did as a request of the township. Back in, way back in 1977, when this subdivision was originally done, there was a proposed future road easement that was granted to the growth property next door. We were asked to take that out because it's, it's a dead little piece of ground that would fall into nothingness. So we took that off the plan and shifted the property lines a little bit, which gave us the opportunity to shallow out the basin, stretch it out, make it a little shallower, still provide the same, you know, stormwater management coverage and mitigation, but we didn't need a 10-foot wall now in the basin to do it. Everything is natural grade. We went through all of that with Mr. Woodrow's office, and I'm sure Lonnie was part of it at that stage. We changed a few of the property lines and twisted the cul-de-sac just a little bit to get some better circulation in there for the emergency vehicles and things like that. We did receive a letter from Woodrow Associates. We addressed all those comments and return plans, so all of that's been addressed. We are working with Montgomery County Conservation District to update and renew our NPDES permits. They were in compliance but needed an update on as far as the date went, so we're bringing that up to the new regs and codes as well. So pretty much everything is being brought up to, up to current engineering ideals and standards with few, few variations. So, any particular questions or anything like that? I mean, we can throw a plan up if we need to.
I know after your discussion with some residents on Stoughton, and then after reading the review letter from Woodrow, my biggest concern was the stormwater management. I know that in the original plans dating way back, it called for things like silt socks, and the Woodrow review letter recommends some more aggressive stormwater management, and I just wanted to make sure that you would be in compliance.
The silt sock is all gone, and actually, I think it worked out. Mr. Woodrow's letter suggested, I think, a six-foot berm.
Six inch.
Six inch. Well, we ended up having to increase that in order to get our capacities for the Conservation District, so it's a little bit bigger than that, but we do have controls along the, we'll call it the southern side, the Stockton Road side of the property. Sure.
Sue, I was asking our solicitor, there's a, included in the '09 resolution is a escrow, itemized escrow list, and so I wanted to make sure that that will be updated to the current pricing.
I actually already spoke to Mr. Woodrow's office about bringing that up to speed, and I did find in my file, if, you know, the solicitor needs any assistance, a very old copy, but editable, copy of the developer's agreement, if it saves you any trouble, so...
No, it won't save me any trouble.
Okay.
I'll have to fix it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just start, we'll just start from new.
It was still a little convoluted last time, so it might be better.
But the, the escrow tabulation, because this goes back to, well, it goes back a long way.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely.
But it's been in front of this board twice before, so...
Once I know what all the improvements are, that we don't have to make any more changes, then we can go knock that out real quick.
So you'll do a tabulation, Tim or Lonnie will approve it, and then it'll come to me, and I just need to know what kind of financial security, who the lender is.
Yeah, we'll get all that worked out for you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so it looks like you're here looking for a approval of the revision.
Yeah, that's what we would like.
Did she put all the copies in one place? Is that what she did? There's a bunch of copies here. Oh, that's what she did, as opposed to distributing them.
I was wondering why they were sitting there, but I have the one. There's a resolution that's in front of the board.
Did she change something?
Yep, it is, yeah. Well, there's some extra stuff in there. Attached to the resolution is the Woodrow letter, and then there's conditions from the '09 resolution and from the '07 resolution. There's some parking rec fees and some other things in there.
Yeah, which we have in our files.
Why don't you just go through it?
Yeah, I'll go through the resolution. This is a resolution that would approve a final, revised final subdivision plan for nine lots for 324 Level Road. And I'll go through the wherethes, but essentially, the history is, this is in 1978?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven originally, that was recorded. And since then, that plan has been revised twice. The first revision was Resolution Number 0785. The second resolution was '09 163.
Yes.
And so this is a further revision of the plan as it sat for '09 163. The resolution is now therefore, it's hereby resolved, the Lower Providence Township Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the final plan of major subdivision for 324 Level Road, subject to the following conditions. And the conditions are, compliance with the '07 resolution, what's remaining from that, compliance with the '09 163 resolution, which amended the '07 resolution, compliance with the Woodrow and Associates review letter dated August 12, 2014, and then compliance with all other applicable ordinances and state and federal rules, regulations, and statutes. Some of the things that are outstanding is NPDES permit, sewer capacity and execution of the service agreement with the sewer authority, approval for public water service, planning module approval by DEP, any required township or state road opening permits, approval from Montgomery County Conservation District, and execution of an updated development and financial security agreement. So, the conditions have not really changed beyond '09, and what you've done to tweak the plan, and then whatever the outside permits are. So that's, that's the resolution that's before the board for, for this revised final plan.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, John. All right, so before us, would someone like to make a motion to accept this resolution that would revise the final subdivision plan?
I make a motion to approve the revised final subdivision plan for 324 Level Road.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions from board members? Questions from the audience? Yes, Christina, come forward, please.
Thank you. I am resident of Stoughton Road, and I understand that we're finally getting rid of the full track socks or whatever they're called. Well, you might think that there's gonna be a six-foot berm.
Six-inch berm.
Six-inch berm. Not very big.
Well, it's a, it's a low-profile berm.
And who's gonna maintain that berm?
Property owners.
And how are we gonna make sure that those property owners do maintain that berm? Because I can tell you, if you've ever driven down Stoughton Road on a rainy day, that there's a lot that should have been done by the township before those current homes were already built. It's a map, you can see the erosion, and from what I've talked to the Conservation District and even talked with other people from the township, and looked at the maps, that the water that apparently runs off doesn't quite match what the grading is. Okay, long story short, that this, this needs to be controlled, and this needs, somebody needs to watch out for it, and I can't imagine that the township is gonna monitor to make sure that that berm doesn't go away. How, how are we gonna do this to protect the residents who are already on Stoughton Road?
There's gonna be a stormwater agreement as part of this approval.
From the plans that I saw, which I had to pay for to get from the township?
Can I finish?
If yes, I didn't realize you weren't.
That's, that's required. That's gonna be signed. The township will have a right to inspect the property, and the township will have a right to enforce all the stormwater facilities, whatever's being constructed out there. That's gonna be something the township will have a right to enforce.
And I'm sure the township's aware that it's not up on this map, but the plans that I paid for, which don't include the current plans, that the stormwater to gather to the basin do not include portions of the properties at the south end of this property.
The only part of the property, Sue- The only part of the property, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but the only part of the property that doesn't get to the basin is the rear lots of nine, eight, seven, and six. The roof drains for those houses are actually, have been changed now to pitch towards the front. So they'll get into the stormwater system in the road that'll take the water to the basin.
Unfortunately, I have not seen the map.
Well, maybe, maybe the app can provide you with a set of those plans.
But I would like to see that and have a chance to discuss it before anything's approved. Is there something we can see that shows?
Do you have another plan?
Because the last map I saw, and again, paid for, it did not include these portion of the property. And if it has been updated, great, because we would love to be...
Two of 10.
But...
Good. One minute.
Two.
Two. It's two of 10. Yeah, that's it.
Looks like counterclockwise to me. Are they looking forward so they can put it up on the screen? That's what's going on.
I don't... Yeah, that's it.
There we go.
Okay, that's not the one that I had seen, which showed where the stormwater. It had, like, it dotted line around and said that the, it included one, two, three, came around, maybe the top part of five, skipped over most of six, and went down that way. And that's where my concern is, even when I talk to the Conservation District, that this back portion where most of the water runs from is not being controlled. And more impervious, we all know what that means.
Right.
And so what are...
Sue, you want to explain?
Yeah, it'd be helpful to be a little... And everyone who's watching it would be appreciative. Thank you.
I understand. Sue, can you grab the mic so that everybody can hear?
Okay. Yeah, I think we're on here. Okay, what we have is a piece of property that does not have any stormwater management on it at all. Once we get done with the development, we're going to end up with, I believe there's eight rain gardens, which are individual on-lot basins, and we're going to end up with a stormwater network. We're also going to end up with a large basin. What we're responsible for doing is, because we have some bypass water that's coming into our property from someone else who's not controlling theirs, we have to take that on and maintain it and manage it. Right. What the Township Ordinance requires is that the 100-year post-development storm must be let out at a 50-year pre-development rate, which means if we have 10 gallons coming in a minute, we're going to only allow to put out, say, five gallons per minute when it's all said and done, when everything is constructed. So what I'm saying is, there's a very small portion of this property that we are allowed to, I don't think the laser pointer's working. Oh, there it is. We have a very small portion of this property in the very, very back that is being allowed to run off in conjunction for overcompensating for other areas where water is coming in that we can capture and control and mitigate out and redirect away from you guys that are experiencing it now. What we have are rain gardens out in the front of all the lots. There are perimeter drains that are going to get put in as far as the downspouts go, which collect the water off the roof, push it out front, and, you know, manage it the way we're required to under BNP and NPDES rules. So that's, that's what we're doing. We're taking a property that has no stormwater control and we're going to manage it.
Right. It has no stormwater control. It's one house that's been knocked down, but the concern still is, I just did everything the same, but the back portion of that property where most of the water is running is going to get a six-inch berm. And I'm asking the township to recognize that and to see what you can do.
Well, most of the water's not going to run to the back properties. First of all, the cul-de-sac itself is going to cut off a large majority of the off-site water and the site water. So, so to say that all the water's running to the rears of these, of those properties is not correct.
Well, it's current.
Currently, but in the post-developed condition, most of that water is going to be cut off and redirected to this large basin in the corner.
You don't have the rest of the property back here displayed. It cuts off at the cul-de-sac. And I'm going to say it for a bit of a specific time, that that is the portion, again, of what I was able to say, that this is that portion is not controlled at all. And that's where currently most of the water is. So when the cul-de-sac ends at the beginning of Lot Five, in my experience, which has been a number of years, most of the water is running from Lot Five to the portion of Lot Six. And...
Let me, let me hop a little bit here. Up in this area, way up at top of Lot Three, where the open field is, there's a lot of water coming through there right now and that's probably what you're seeing. What we have are stormwater measures right here in the back of Lot Four to cut that water off. So the only area that is intended to flow off-site is this small area, as opposed to the massive acreage way up above the property that's coming through. The best stormwater management you can do to help yourself, let this get built.
Oh, I just want to make sure that it's built as a good neighbor and that it's not causing more problems, because there have been problems as far as impervious has been done. And we just want to make sure that it's right, because once it gets built, we have nothing. We have absolutely nothing. So if there's going to be a report, it's going to be now.
There's been numerous reviews by Woodrow and Associates and previous township engineers. We've been through the NPDES process twice. This is the third time. There are very strict and stringent rules. Every, we get updates as engineers and bulletins that this has changed, that's changed. We're doing this now to protect better. And because we're in that process, we got to comply with all that. So we're, you know, we're in the loop. We're, we're there. We're doing what we can. A six-inch berm will hold a lot of water. And our berms are even bigger than six inches.
Yeah, my concern is, although it may be required by that homeowner, that the berm will get knocked down or changed according to landscaping by the homeowner. We know that happens. We know that, at least, I believe that some of the township haven't been able to get those corrected when they, when they are aware of it, if they're aware. It's not simple. We go, "If they fixed it and the homeowner goes, "Oh, okay, let me just stop and do that." So it is a big concern. If I had paid better attention, we would have had things worked out tonight. So here's another question. Pardon, this is wetlands, and I don't know what the requirement is for that. I had posed that question before the township and...
If I may?
Yes, yes.
I've been working with this property for nine years. There is not a speck of wetlands on this. I'd love to know where you got your information.
From the township. I hate to have information. I didn't bring it tonight, which is not a weapon on the agenda, but it does say that there are wetlands on the property and it's going to be bad. And if there are, and they...
I know Mr. Manai has almost as much history with this property as I do.
He's talking more than I do. There are a lot more paperwork.
I'm not aware of any designated wetlands on this property.
And if I can get something to you, scan it, email it or something, I think they're all going to be on the back, which is what I'm having...
You can, you can send it to Mike at the township and he can forward it along to me.
Okay. It seems like you've done a lot more. I don't remember that basin up at the top. I do know that the basin up by the street is up till from where these other homes are and, you know, go to the great neighbors. Everybody does because, you know, it's something you need to make things up.
Yeah, I mean, this is set up to be more of, you know, an estate-type, you know, subdivision. It's not, you know, just a bunch of little tiny houses getting plopped in. These are strategically designed lots and everything like that, that we want to, we want to mesh with the surrounding neighborhood. So, you know, it's not a case of, you know, we're going to have people just going in freewillly, knocking things out that they know they shouldn't.
Yeah, you kind of build their inbox. So I'm pretty sure that we're going to get the lead. And also, lest I had understood, are there work in the sidewalk for Level Road or are we going to have sidewalks for Level Road? Or is that something that...
Yep.
Yeah, there are sidewalks on Level Road.
Yes.
Only to the property line.
Right.
The northern property line, that's it. Once it goes to the Graff's property, then that's not our jurisdiction.
So I hope everything goes well. And thank you for answering my questions. Thank you for your participation and look forward to meeting you later.
Okay. Yes, Kathy, come on up. We have one more.
Just stand right here.
Well, yeah, we need the microphone, so, sorry.
It's part of the NPDES that has not come back in yet.
Excuse me, could you state your name and address for the record, please? I'm sorry, Kathy Beyer, 3568 R. Coler Road. Thank you. As part of the NPDES permit that hasn't been done yet. So there's a lot of permitting that still hasn't come in yet. I mean, is there going to be an archaeological study done on that? There's, there's a lot of undisturbed land in here, right? This is, has never been disturbed land?
We've, we've been in conjunction with this property for over nine years. Whatever the previous owner did with it, that was their business. We are not required to do any kind of archaeological dig. We have been deemed administratively complete and we are most of the way through a technical review of the NPDES permit. We're expecting minor comments back. There's been no mention of archaeological excavation or anything like that. So...
But this is, but it's all undisturbed land. I mean, it's 90% a large, and it's kind of unusual that they went...
Yeah, but I guess if I may ask a question of a few of, of all of the regulations and requirements that we refuse to be drawn through, no one has deemed it necessary to do any kind of mention of archaeological excavation. Where would that requirement come in?
That would come from Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission?
Yeah, you guessed that.
You did?
Yes. And all official load and wildlife commission, everything. We do not have any pending affected requirements regarding this property.
Okay. I'm surprised that they didn't, I'm just surprised that they didn't require just like a phase one study where they just, they do little plots because...
Phase one studies are based upon environmental disturbance, which we do not have any kind of spills or contaminations or affecting this.
No, no, phase one archaeological study. Just because there's, you know, we know that we're, I'm not sure you're aware, that we have a very historical area there, Native American-wise, prehistoric settlements. And even Arrowhead School, which is right up the street from your development, is actually called Arrowhead School because of all the arrowheads that they found. So I'm just surprised that there wouldn't have been a, you know, some sort of study just to, you know, to see if there's any artifacts in there that could be protected. But I guess we could look into that a little more if necessary.
Well, this site was used numerous times to update the...
Yeah, sometimes things get overlooked. I'm just, you know, we're just wondering about that. And then just the other thing, because these are things that I'm concerned about, just because they mean a lot to me. It's not to be antagonistic.
I'm familiar with your area, where you live.
Right, and I'm not, not trying to be antagonistic, but just that's, these are just things that I'm concerned about. And then also trees. I love trees. And I'm just wondering, I know that there's a township ordinance where, they're called heritage trees, trees that are of a certain size, if you're aware of that. Are, will you be able to...
In 2007, this site was exempted from the heritage tree requirement. We are, in effect, I know my people are very conscious of trees. We do the best we can to save what we need to. I mean, old growth trees are valuable in development.
All right.
We are also putting, I think, in excess of 106 trees back.
Yeah. Well, the old growth has that rootage that, you know, when you're talking about all your stormwater issues that could take place of a lot of basins. Just curious of how you become exempt on the heritage tree ordinance?
Because this property was approved four years before that ordinance came in.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, the board's aware of these questions and do you feel there's any, anything pertinent?
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the audience? All right, hearing none.
Just one question for Mr. Manai. Will the designed stormwater system of the land now improve the stormwater management on the Stouton Road below?
Improve? I would say that it would have caused no adverse effect to the properties down below.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, at this time, if, if we're ready to entertain a motion to accept this revised... You have the motion. Oh, excuse me. Sorry. It's spaced out. All right, so we'll call for the vote. All those in favor consent by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. The board appreciates the questions. The problem with subdivision, old subdivision plans like this, as you can see, is this has gone on for quite a long time. And so things change, ordinances change, board members change. So things have already been approved. This is just down to the final tweaking changes. So that's what we need to focus on at this point. So, thank you. But of course, if there's questions from residents as this project, if it starts to get implemented, please contact the township and, you know, we'll make sure things are addressed appropriately. Okay? Okay. All right, item three. This would be old business, discussion and consideration of residential trash and recycling bid and possible authorization to advertise bid.
Yes, thank you. For tonight, we have the trash, residential trash and recycling bid specification package. And you should all have received the draft of this document previously. It's gone through a couple revisions, the latest of which was done on Monday, the 13th. You should have an email from Tim Woodrow outlining 10 changes to the draft. If you'd like, I could go over those individually or you can talk about those specifically if you'd like.
Well, I think it would be helpful if you could quickly go through them. I mean, we talked about the initial, the first version two weeks ago. And so...
So these are the changes that have resulted out of that first version. Okay, the changes that were made to the first version are, one, identification and definition of commercial properties. Two, reinforcement, reinforced the township's ability to levy fines to the contractor for failure to collect. Three, add a weather-related exemption for pickup. Four, define the holiday service requirements. Five, add an option for, add an optional fee for e-waste pickup. Six, add a volume control bid option where homeowners would choose either one or two 96-gallon containers and once a week, pick up with the caveat that all waste must fit in the container. Seven, reinforce the, "I'm on vacation, don't charge me" provision for interrupted service. Eight, add language that requires the carrier to notify the homeowner if the homeowner is not following the provision of the pickup protocol. Nine, remove the bulk leaf collection by separate contract option. And 10, remove the recycle bank language and ask for an incentive program to encourage recycling. And this would come from the awarded contractor. Would be his responsibility or the company's responsibility to, to have a incentive program for recycling. So those were the changes that were done to the original draft.
Okay, thanks, Lonnie.
There's two things I should point out that haven't actually been dealt with yet. One is, is the issue of reduction in the collection schedule for yard waste. And I think, I think we all talked about whether it's a, you know, which winter months should be taken out. And two, the reduction of bulk waste, the reduction of the bulk waste pickup schedule. Might be reduced to one time per month as discussed.
Okay, so I think we could probably handle this as... Okay, so I think we could probably handle this as maybe one, one thing at a time. Those, those two items you just mentioned, the, the yard waste and the bulk waste, I think we should probably discuss that, because I don't, I don't know if we have all sort of come to a conclusion on how we want to go with that. So the reduction in collection for the yard waste, currently it's always once a week, 52 weeks of the year. Do we want to keep that as is, or is it something that we want to cut off in the winter months?
It would be my suggestion that starting, say, Thanksgiving, end of November, first to December, we reduce that to once a month through middle to the end of March. Nobody's cutting their grass that time of year. Most of the leaves are up by then. We're usually looking at snow. If we do get a bad storm with branches and whatnot, once a month. If we can generate a saving.
But my concern is if we have the winter storms like we did last year, right? I mean, we had people putting branches out of their curbs that we tried to pick up and chip, and it took Mr. Primus and his crew how long to chip all those? I mean, better part of two months? Yeah. So, I mean, if we have the, this still once a week, people are able to get them off their property if they want in January and February when those big branches come down.
They still have to cut them up to rather small pieces for pickup, which is fine. They have to do that. I just think once a month would probably be plenty. That's my thought.
I think as Don said, if there's significant savings associated with it, then I think there's benefit.
And that's, that's the tough part. We don't, we don't know that. We don't know if there's the savings. They're sort of, you know, in the dark. Well, I think you have to narrow it down. I mean, to decide what you want to do. I mean, there's, there's a lot of nitty-gritty details before we can go ahead and accept this, so...
What do you want to do? Vote on that particular issue? You have two ideas out there.
To cut it back in the winter months?
Or not.
Or not.
I mean, then we put both options out there and see what the, the price differential comes back at?
Well, what do you think of that, Lonnie?
Yes, I think that's a very good suggestion. Just, just stick both of them in, see what it comes back at. See, see what kind of numbers we get.
And I think the, the same should be true probably of the bulk item.
Right. Correct.
So the bulk, the bulk item could be, reduce that to once a month throughout the year?
Yeah, I mean, if it saves money, it saves money, but if it doesn't, might as well give the residents the option to continue to use it.
Okay. All right. I'm fine with that?
And all of the other items that were mentioned all came out of the debate from the last meeting.
Yeah, they were. I'm just going through them. That's what I'm looking at my phone for. Okay. I did have a couple, couple things in the, the main specs that, that was sent over. So this new version, this contract says the start time would be 6:00 a.m. Now, I didn't go back and look at what our current wanted, but for some reason I had 7:00 a.m. in my mind that that was our current start time. I think that's what we have for contractors doing business in the township, and maybe that should be something that's consistent.
I think 7:00 a.m. is a more appropriate time.
Yeah.
Because all construction projects usually, the hours start at seven, so trash should be the same.
It's certainly dark out there now before seven, so, okay, so that was one thing. My, my concern, the way it's, the way it's written is there's a couple different options, and there's the trash part, the, is taken in, in one bid number, and then there's a second section that has it for recycling. Now, my concern is, is if you have the two of them separate, potentially you could end up with a low bid number for trash hauling, and a low bid could be another contractor with recycling. Am I reading that right?
I think what you're saying is that, that trash, like, one company could be low on the trash, and the next company could be low on the recycled.
Right, right.
But what you need to do is combine the two and then pick the low bidder from that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure certainly our overall...
Wouldn't that option violate our ordinance of having a single hauler?
Right.
So we couldn't award that bid because we would have two haulers then in the township, which would violate our own ordinance?
Probably, depending on how, I think it's written, recycling and trash together.
Yeah, why would we separate them?
Right, right.
That's the bid we're going out for.
So I think there's, two of those need to be combined.
Okay.
Plus, it could also cause a problem because you, well, if you went ahead with two different companies, then you'd be getting bills for your recycling, bills for your trash, and...
So you want more specific language combining the trash and the recycling as one bid?
Mm-hmm. Is there anything in there about replacement of receptacles? There's probably, should be something in there. Some people might have had those toders for quite a while now, and they don't last forever. And hopefully there would not be a charge for replacement if something happens to them. So just, if you can make sure that there's a note in there about that. We talked about the leaves, we talked about the bulk, and, and now the per bag issue.
Before we get on to that, since you were mentioning the receptacles, and I agree with what you said, but some language is to the timeframe that a resident can...
Right. You can't get a new receptacle every month.
Well, no, that they, once they report it missing, because mine floated away in one of the storms, believe it or not.
Oh, so, once they reported, they should have it within a week.
Yeah, it took me 10 days to get a new one. That's a long time to start piling your trash up, so. So there was some, some sort of timeframe from when it was reported that your receptacle was damaged or lost or stolen.
Okay. Can you do that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, not at all. Okay, so in the, Lonnie, on the bid form, the way it's written, it says all bids must include the following base services, five different things. Solid waste, recycling, yard waste, bulk item, and number five was a per bag fee option. My concern with that one is, so say, say a company wants to bid on it, but yet they don't want to do the per bid program.
Per bag.
Per bag, excuse me, per bag program. Technically, the way that's written, you have to bid on all those five items. If you don't bid on that fifth item, it would be void, correct?
Correct.
So I don't even know if we have anybody taking advantage of the per bag, because we've heard so many bad things about it that it's not cost-effective. Should that be taken out, is my, essentially my question?
That's your decision, but, you know, we had talked about it at one point being in, and if you don't think it's appropriate, we can take it out.
Maybe we could find out, I'm going to talk to Denise and see if she, like, she knows if, if how many people are actually, because somehow we found out who was using the, the leaf collection, right, didn't we, from the last time? You know, the leaf vacuuming. We found out there was only one or two people, I think, that were taking advantage of that, so that's all I'm worried about with that. I don't want the, I don't want the bid practices to be so complicated that we narrow the scope of who's bidding, and of course, we want to get the, you know, the most companies out there looking at it. It's, it's a, you know, it's a complex issue, certainly, but we're trying to get the best price for everybody. Okay.
I would just posit that to go back and research the per bag option after we've been soliciting the opinion of the, the residents for several months now, just delays the bid process at this point.
Well, you want to just take that number five off of there?
I didn't receive emails really from anyone suggesting that, that was exceptionally important, and yet, you know, we, we've had that out there, so what's the harm in including it? You believe that there're going to be companies that don't want to bid on the per bag?
I do, and I can only, I can only say that because I remember looking at the, the '09 contract, and I think there were only two companies at that point. Now, I'm going for memory, so, so you have to bear with me. But there was certainly, you know, it was like a pick and choose menu. They would throw a number in, at this option, and this option, and the per bag option, and there were, I don't recall the, both of the bidders putting in something for the per bag, because it's not something that I, that all companies do. It's not typical. Can you put the, the per bag as an option?
Sure.
Not as the bid must include it?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure legally we can do that.
I think you should leave it in there. You know, if they want to bid, if they want to put in a bid, they put in a bid, you know?
I think most companies are flexible enough that they could, if they want to...
And if they really don't want to do it, they're going to make it so expensive as that part of their bid that you're not going to, which is where we're at now, because the per bag option is not much of a savings to people, because the option came back as so expensive as to not make sense to people. But they did put it out there as part of the bid.
And you don't necessarily have to take advantage of it. Okay.
Right. I'm, I'm just saying that if I were the trash company, excuse me, the refuse company, they, they have the option to price that in a way that makes it unattractive to people to pay as part of their bid.
Okay. Patrick, you all right with that then? Leaving it in?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Anybody else? Okay.
I just, I have to reiterate this, because when I ran for supervisor, I made a big point, the fact that I, I don't support the single hauler option. I made that clear here repeatedly. I want to make it clear again that I don't support the single hauler option. However, I live in reality here, and there's no traction for that idea on the board, so I will go forward, try and secure the best deal for the residents of the township under the single hauler option that we can get. Regrettably, I wasn't able to succeed in getting people to agree with me on that. I want to get that out. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Don. I think the overall consensus is, the reason why we're going through this bidding mechanism again is because the board wants to get the best price for our residents. And we've weighed all the options, we've, we've taken a lot of opinions, and, you know, we've said it before, that it, this, not every product is going to work for everybody. But if we can get a very good deal, I think in the end, residents are happy with that. They're not paying more than they would if they went out and purchased it themselves. So that's our objective.
That's, I mean, we could argue that, but let's just move forward.
Okay, questions from the audience? Yes, Mr. Boray. Oh, you're back there waving at me, so you got called first.
No, you folks looked a lot sharper on the computer than you do on TV. Bill, thank you. Some of the questions that Lonnie brought up, six o'clock is what you have now. You're talking about seven o'clock, you're running with buses then. You're going to have your haulers holding up the buses, and you're going to have the buses holding up the haulers. Think that one over. Six o'clock isn't bad. I talked to some people in other townships, they have multiple haulers, and they're picking up at 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning. Now, all I'm doing is just giving you information. As you know, I don't care how you go, I just did some information. Now, if you're going to do away with the recycling and have one hauler and the other, do away with it completely and let the pickers pick everything up. Because you have pickers running through this township on the pickup day, if you have bulk items. If you have a refrigerator out there, they won't touch the refrigerator because of the freon. Your present hauler will take the refrigerator with the freon and not charge you for taking the freon out of it. But if you put a range out there, you put something out there metal, you got a picker coming around the whole, the whole township picking up, because you see them in pickup trucks. So maybe you don't need to recycle them. And then your per bag, if you're going to go with once a week pickup, you won't have to worry about the per bag, because you're only going to have the once-a-week pickup, and if people can't afford the twice-a-week pickup, that'll eliminate that. I, I wrote down some questions, and I'm not going to be a smart aleck about it, but I, Mr. Duffy said at the last meeting, I think it was, Patrick, that you had about 35 emails in Texas, right? Out of, 29 out of 6,600 people, right? Can you tell me what the majority of the questions were? Was it because of the double pickups? Was it because of the cost? What was their main concerns?
I mean, it's spread around. It, it split the gamut. It's...
Yeah, it, it completely split the gamut. It's, we're completely happy with the current service, the current provider. Please don't change a thing to the current provider, the current service is horrible, please change everything to, I don't like twice a week, we only need it once a week. I mean, it, it was, there was no consensus between any of them.
Even to the point where, where we had complaints about the color of the containers.
Correct.
The toders?
Yeah. Yeah. There was no uniformity or, or, you know, general consensus amongst the 29 emails.
Well, you know how long I was, I've been a supervisor, and I have all the, I have all the things. Now, the last one they sent out, basically, it gives you everything that you talked about tonight. The bulk collection, the yard waste collection, the unacceptable items, the service suspension. It tells you right in here, if you go out on a vacation, you can call them or send, best to send them a letter, because then you have something to back up on. Send them a letter, tell them you're going to be out of vaca, on vacation for four weeks, and then they dock you, took 25%, 30, $35 off your bill. Very simple. They have holiday collection, waste and recycling fees, no hazardous waste, per bag problem, and then they have questions and problems on it. And, and you, I don't know why you're wasting all your time, your precious time, on putting all that stuff together when all you have to do is take the current bid and just put once-a-week collection on it. That's the only thing you're looking for, is to save the township money, save the people money. Right now, this isn't bad. Did you ever see a trash truck take a box spring and put it in the back of the thing? Man, does that thing do the job. I put one out, and it went just like that. It went, no questions asked. Then, talking about leaves collection, okay? One nice thing, I don't think we have an ordinance on a book about blowing leaves at curb, or blowing them in the street. I come up Park Avenue the other day, and some guy was blowing all his leaves out in the middle of Park Avenue. Sorry, excuse me. If we had an ordinance that you can't do that, then we don't have to worry about it. Right now, if somebody blows their leaves at park, at curb side, you park your car on it, you got a hot modif, hot, what am I trying to say, muffler? You got a fire. So maybe we ought to have an ordinance that you can't do that. I don't know. Service, I don't know that. Have a contract read, pick up any metal appliance for the hauler, so that you don't have the pickers. And then I did mention that, I did talk to people in some other townships, and they're, they have multiple haulers, and they're picking up at 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning. I sure wouldn't want a trash truck banging outside my one at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning. Six o'clock's bad enough, I'm retired. And like I said to Mr. Duffy, that, you know, when, when he mentioned 29 people had complaints out of 6,600 people, it must be a testimony for the current hauler that they're doing a good job.
And Mr. Boray, I will tell you that I wouldn't characterize them as complaints. I would characterize them as comments, as we ask for feedback, good or bad. It was just 29 comments back. They, they were not all complaints. Some of them were praise, some of them definitely were complaints. So it, it, I, I wouldn't just characterize them as complaints. They were comments.
I just, you know, I want to thank you for your work on it and everything else. Personally, as a resident of the township, resident, I don't think $400 for what I'm getting in trash pickup is bad, and I'm retired. Thank you.
Thirty.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Candy.
Yeah, can, excuse me, Candy Ella by Eglaville. As far as the bid process goes, I'm just curious, if you're going to put that down for bid, why can't you just put in what you want for the township president? the township residents? What you would like to see for them, your thoughts and your decisions, and let the trash companies decide whether they want to bid or what you want for your residents? Instead of deciding, you know, the one bag option, basically a scam. You'll wind up paying more per bag. You need to offer the residents, I mean, honestly, you need to offer the residents the right to pick their own trash companies, like West Norton and Worcester do. And those two townships are very happy being able to choose who they want. It's their decision. But the residents should be offered the right to once a week pickup without being charged more than the twice a week. And I know myself and a lot of residents only need once a week, but why should we be charged more when that trash truck's going to go by anyway? And, I mean, I know there's an issue of having a lot of trash trucks on the road. Right now, I have a lot of dump trucks going up down my road, and I will for a lot of months. And a lot of roads are going to have the same problem. That adds wear and tear. That's not a township problem because it's a state road. But, you know, this is an argument. I know a number of townships and people that live in, and I've checked around, I've done my due diligence, who are able to choose who they want to pick up their trash, and they're very happy with it. I'm talking about this because I'm the one in charge of paying the trash bill. That's my new job. And I was very happy with the former trash service that I had. Unfortunately, she chose not to stay in business. But you should dictate in your bid what you want for your residents. We want a cheaper price for a once a week service if they choose twice a week service. As far as recycles, you said incentives for recycles? I think that's an ordinance that you have to recycle. I don't think the, the residents should get an incentive to recycle. This should be second nature. I mean, it took me a long while to learn to recycle because I wasn't raised to do it. My children do it unconsciously because this is where they're raised. So I don't think we should have to give the residents an incentive to do what's required by the township. But I think you really need to, to look out for the best interest of your residents. And I know a big problem in this township is apathy. A lot of people wait till after the fact to complain. But I think you would find a lot of happy people if you found it cheaper once a week pickup. And, I mean, these are things to look into, but seriously, when you make up the bids, I think you would just list what you would like for your township and say to the haulers, this is what we want. Let's hear your bids on it. And if they're not interested, they'll drop away. And I know you'll thin the crowd out, but you should dictate and not what.
Candy, just, just to help, so, so the bid package does dictate. But basically, we're having two different options. We're doing the once a week so we can get an idea of what that cost would be, and then there is going to be a twice a week option. So you, when they return, if somebody, company puts the, you know, a bid in, an offer, they will have numbers in each column. And so the, the board will look at those numbers and then can decide if this is a, you know, a decent price, or are we going to go with that, or are we going to go with something else? Yes, Don?
Maybe I'm confused. The way we left it, and I'm sorry, I, I thought this was settled already. We were going to do once a week pickup with either one or two containers, right?
As one of the bids.
What's the other?
There are multiple bids. There are five of them?
Yes. Yes.
With the containers, would you be required to have one or two? I mean, right now, I have four containers that are my own, that I had before with my previous that are in really good shape, plus my recycled yard cart. So, I mean, I hope the people that already had their containers don't have to switch because I have pretty good ones. They've lasted at least through the winter.
Well, that, that would be depending on what we would pick. What Don's referring to is, he, he made a suggestion that you had one container, you had to fit all your trash into that container, or you had, you paid for two containers. This would, that would be a, one option that the board could choose or could not choose. But we're asking for prices on that option. Does that make sense?
Basically, everybody in the township, if I understand it right, that's where I thought this was settled, would be once a week pickup. You would decide what level of service you require at the be, at the outset. In other words, for the year, whether you want one containers or two. In effect, equalling the same pickup, the same trash removal that you have with the twice a week pickup, but they're only coming around once a week. And that way, the hauler knows he's only got to go down your street once, once a week, and he's either going to be picking one or two barrels out from in front of your house. That's the only bid option I was comfortable putting out. I think, I think if we do the other ones, I'm, I'm not comfortable with actually supporting that.
I mean, I would just, because I only, my recycle, we only put out maybe once a month.
Yeah, well, the, the largest complaint I've gotten just from the people I run into every day in the township is from people who say, what is it with the twice a week? Now, I do run into people who say, oh, I, I, I need the twice a week. But most of the people I run into say, I don't need them coming out twice a week. Why am I paying for this? So I'm surprised we're, we're actually even bidding that out because, as you said, I think we should bid out what we feel is best for the residents of the township. So that, having the other aspects of the bid, I think just muddies the waters. And it, it leaves us open to what happened five years ago where the board sat here and promised all kinds of resolutions and options to the residents, and then very quickly adopted a trash bid that sort of negated everything they wanted. So I'm hoping we're not going down that road again.
Unfortunately, I remember that very well. Okay, well, thank you very much for.
Thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Yes, Kathy?
One, since more comments, I need a two-day pickup. But I know, you know, it's whatever you decide, but when you have children, grandchildren, and all that, you know, just pizza boxes, because we have to get a lot of delivery. You know, two pizza boxes a week, I mean, or, but, you know, don't fit into trash bags very well, and, you know, there's just a lot of, I guess, trash. But I love the two-day thing, and I love having the big bulk pickup on Friday so that you just, you know, on your, your Tuesday, you know that you just put up your regular trash bags, and that you have an option on Friday to get that big stuff out there. So I just, you know, I like that.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Well, hearing no more questions, how would we like to proceed here? Lonnie has some tweaking to do on some wording.
Correct.
But I believe you could, you could still do that, and, but we could authorize your advertising.
We could easily incorporate the comments that were generated tonight into the specs and get them ready for, for bid.
Okay. Are, are we ready?
At this point, I'm ready to make a motion to put the five bids out to be advertised with the addition of the comments from this evening.
Okay. Jason, we have a motion then. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any questions from board members? I would just have to say that I, I'd like to see the five options and see what those numbers come back so that we have a better idea of what it, what it's going to cost our residents, and then we can decide later down the road what to do. We have, right now, we have no idea how much it could cost, once a week, twice a week, ten times a week, whatever it is, we don't know, but.
Or how much a hauler lets you put out. If you have it once a week, do they limit you to one trash can?
So this way, we will have more information so we can make an informed decision.
Right.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Boray, question? Sure.
Is this just going to go to Lonnie? Recycling, state law, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Because of the size of our township. We are, we are, we have to. Yep. Okay. Any other questions from the audience? We're going to call for the vote. All those in favor consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? None? Motion carried. Okay. Okay. Item four, we have some announcements. Library Board will hold their meeting on October twentieth at 7:00 PM. Board of Supervisors will have our second 2015 budget workshop on October 21st at 6:30. I believe that's a Wednesday night, I think. No?
Tuesday.
Tuesday? Planning Commission will hold their regular meeting, monthly meeting on October 22nd at 7:00 PM. And the zoning hearing board will have their meeting on October 23rd at 7:00 PM. Mike, maybe you could tell us a couple, is there anything coming up?
Okay, thank you.
Planning Commission and zoning, sorry.
I'm sorry. Planning Commission is really going to be following up on the joint meeting that we had last month. I've spoken with Jean-Metric to kind of summarize what it is. We want to concentrate a little bit more into detail with the, the boundaries, that was one of the issues that we talked about, and also the, the uses. And concentrate on that part of the discussion to, with the Planning Commission next week. I also believe that WB Homes will be talking, I guess, with, now that they've heard what the thinking the township is, you know, talk about their, their proposal a little bit more. In terms of the zoning hearing board, the matter, it's a much shorter agenda than last month, fortunately. The highlights, and I actually brought them with me this time, the big, the big one which brought, had a lot of interaction last time, was the J and K Excavating Project down here on Ridge and, and Grange. That has been continued, I guess, twice now, and so that'll be coming forth. The, we will also be talking about a residential project on Church Road. A gentleman is renovating an old farmhouse, has a very unusual lot. It's like an L-shaped lot that actually is, in a sense, a corner lot, and so needs some interpretation in terms of setbacks. There's a third hearing, which will be from the folks proposing the Taco Bell down at Trooper and Audubon. The two issues there are primarily signage and impervious coverage. And the last issue was one that did not get heard last month, and that's a residential generator, household generator setback issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Comments and other business? Board members have any comments?
Very briefly, the sewer authority met last week. One of the positive effects of development in the township is that EDUs are purchased, and that will in turn help to keep our sewer rates lower.
The library has a fundraiser coming up November eighth. Books, brews, beats, and whatever other B-word they can come up with. Get your tickets ahead of time and save a few dollars, but it's a good time. They're going to have country line dancing, and it's all to support your library.
Okay. I have one, one announcement. The, our new Arcola Road Bridge, the groundbreaking will be Monday, the 20th. So we're finally making progress on that. It's come a long way, and thanks to a lot of effort from some very important people. That bridge will, you know, begin very soon, and before you know it, those detour signs will be taken down, and we'll all be traveling smoothly, hopefully. Okay. Courtesy of the floor then. Does the audience have anything? Yes, Mr. Boray?
Hi, Deb. I think you know who I am. Hey, I'd like to invite all you for the zoning hearing. That would be a good meeting. Madam Chairperson, if I may, I'd just like to make some comments. You don't have to answer. None of you people have to, none of you supervisors have to answer. Mr. Price, Mr. Rice, congratulations. I'll give you a star.
What for?
For the last meeting. The minute, the minutes that you ladies and gentlemen approved on September 18th, Mr. Rice was supposed to make a resolution for the October 2nd meeting for a minor subdivision on Cross Keys Road. Watching the, I wasn't here, but I watched a very good presentation that was on the computer that came out beautiful. And on that, I didn't see any, any discussion on the resolution. You said you were going to have a resolution, but everything was passed through without the resolution. Was there a reason for that? I'm talking about Mr. Orzans, Mr. Organsky's three-lit subdivision at 3961 Cross Keys Road. You did a beautiful presentation. You don't remember? Well, you said, it says here in the minutes that you, it says Solicitor Rice stated if the board comes to a consensus to move forward, he would prepare a resolution for the October 2nd meeting. But I don't think anything was done on the October 2nd meeting. It was?
It was an initial meeting and discussion.
And you did that, you did that during the meeting?
Yeah, there was an initial discussion where the board reviewed what he was proposing. It was an issue of sidewalks and waiver of sidewalks and fees, and then we came back and did the resolution at the next meeting.
All right. Well, my, my concern is with, Christina O'Donnell explained that the Planning Commission came to the decision to waive sidewalks on Ashton Road, but they, the Planning Commission thought it would be a good idea to put it on Cross Keys. Am I correct? Okay. Mainly because of the plans that's coming on Superior Tube that may develop at one time where sidewalks will connect with sidewalks. And it says, Mr. Woodrow noted that there's a pedestrian plan for a business park. Chairwoman Ekman said that it would be appropriate to look at the connect, to the connections at the next meeting. Solicitor Rice said if the sidewalks are eventually required, the homeowners will be responsible for putting them in. That's where I'm losing it because the gentleman that came up here with the subdivision, he, I was looking for teardrops here on, on, on the podium because the guy seemed like he was crying up a storm, and that's when the auction began. I call it the auction of October the 2nd, ninth, or whatever year it is, 2014. I think what you start discussing fees and fees in lieu of, that's when the bidding began. When over to Mr. Woodward, he said $30,000. That's what we should be getting as a township. And then, Mr. Rice says fifty percent of that, fifteen thousand. And then, then it went on and on and on, back and forth, and between Mr. Woodrow, Mr. Rice. That's why I said, you get the star. You took the blunt of the meeting. Mr. Woodward kept reminding the board of what the Planning Commission had to say. I believe we have two supervisors that's liaison to the Planning Commission, and they should have been coming up and saying what happened at that meeting, not Mr. Woodward. And I, you know who you are to represent, or that's liaison with the, with the Planning Commission. Mr. Organsky suggested to the board that he could put the sidewalks in for $2,000. And for less than, I'm sorry, for less than $3,500. I think we have an ordinance on the book that if you put in concrete aprons, it has to be concrete. If you put an apron in for your driveway, it has to be concrete. Now, I don't know what the apron ties into. I think it ties into a sidewalk. But I had an apron put in in two blocks, and that was $2,000 at the contractor, and I knew the contractor. Mr. Price stated, you'll be gone, Mr. Organsky, but the poor homer, poor homeowner is stuck with the job. That's something nice. Welcome to Lower Province Township. You've got to put in five, $6,000 worth of sidewalks because the board of supervisors shot you in the foot. Well, basically, Mrs. Zimmerman made the motion, and I won't say who made the second, but I know who did it, and it sold, it was sold for, the bid was $3,500. Mr. Torgini, congratulations, sir. You stuck to your, your. You stuck to your guns when you mentioned what would possibly happen in the future. First, you guys favored a developer with two thousand dollars. Now you went with thirty thousand, fifteen thousand, thirty-five hundred. I don't know where it's going, but you know I'm a member of the zoning board. We had a homeowner taxpayer at this township who had lived here for twenty-nine years. Has his zoning, had twenty-nine years. The zoning, the supervisors changed the zoning on his property and he had to pay eight hundred dollars to go before us to get an approval to erect a five hundred to a seven hundred dollar shed. That's a disgrace. Now, I've been told that the supervisor's gonna be looking into these fees. I hope it's pretty shortly because we got a lot of stuff coming up before us, ladies and gentlemen. These people that are hard-working taxpayers, and I'm not running for anything either, believe me. I'm not running for office, so I'm not politic. But we have a lot of people in this township, good people, been here a long, long time. They can't afford that eight hundred dollars. And I guess if it wasn't for the law, maybe you wouldn't have planners and zoners. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roy.
Just one quick statement, a little quick update on the regional sewer authority for the community. They know that they're still trying to put, they're still pursuing to put the sewer pipe, you know, in the residents' backyard and the whole archaeological requirements. And PHMC has come back and told them if they continue, want to continue pursuing it, they, their phase three study will now cost, the cost would be between three hundred thousand to one point five million dollars additional to do these studies. And honestly, they are considering it. They are still considering paying this price. And Jason Sergini had mentioned, you know, the good news that Lower Providence is getting EDUs and our rates won't go up. Well, we can't control what the regional sewer authority charges us and if they keep, continue paying, you know, these exorbitant, ridiculous amounts with our taxpayers' money, we are gonna get our rates going up, but it's not gonna be Lower Providence's fault. I just thought, you know, the community that watches TV, you know, watches these televised, you know, should be aware that this is what's happening. It's ludicrous because there isn't an approved, as everyone knows, I won't go into my thing, but there's an approved location, there's an existing right-of-way, no five thirty, you know, none of this is required over there, no five thirty-seven planning and they still continue to go on. So hopefully, maybe we can get some residents to get a little more involved with this if they realize, you know, their money is being spent on this. It's, you know, one point five million, potential, five million dollars. And that's not any construction. That's just archaeological excavating to get, you know, all this out. So just wanted to do a little quick update.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, any other comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none. Someone might can make a motion to, we can adjourn this meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any questions? All in favor, stand by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next meeting is November sixth, unless you wanna come to our budget meeting.